Called. Meetings called to order at 7:01. And members present are. Our Roger Phillips, Catherine Silverman.
In progress.
Somebody else? Oh, Bill and Bill's here as well.
I'm here.
Hi, Bill.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, members present, we've already got all three of us here from the public. Do we have anybody to speak from the public?
Catherine, if I could just mention something, I know I mentioned something to you earlier. I'm in the middle of a bit of a family emergency, and I'm waiting for a couple of phone calls. So if I have to take that and I have to leave, I don't want anybody to take it personal. It's just I'm in a situation.
Understood. We all have them. So, all right, nobody from the public? Okay, first selectmen's briefing, I'm trying to find my notes. We have had a couple of deaths in our community, in a sense, almost family members. We, Chris, if you could help me with the names, because I did misplace my piece of paper here. McCray.
Kathy McCray Swanick. She was a bus driver. She was married to Robbie Swanick and Butch Simpson's son, John.
If I understand, Robbie is one of, he's our town's longest-serving employee. And also Butch Simpson's son, I guess, lived in California. The arrangements for Robbie's wife's memorial are at, I believe, that's being handled by the Hungarian Social Club next Saturday at noon. Let us know if you want more information. Okay, I had a couple of other things, and God knows, I can't find them right now. They were right in front of me, but I've been running around here. What I can tell you is with our roads, these storms, these rolling series of storms have certainly taken their toll. They've taken their toll on our roads, on our road crews, and on our materials for the roads. So what I can tell you, and I'm extremely proud of them, is that all the roads are open, including Cushman, because the Public Works gang managed to get that repaired by 3 o'clock this afternoon, which was good. We had TV crews out there. We had all kinds of gawkers out there. It was unsafe, and they managed to get that all done that quickly. And if you had seen it, you know, some of you may have seen videos of it, whether it's on TV or whether it's on Facebook. It was quite something. So pretty amazing they got it done. We can expect that the other roads, and many of you who drive around town, and I'm sure you all do, will see that sides of roads are. Sides of paved roads are, hi Paul, thank you for joining. The sides of some of our paved roads are completely washed away. They're not safe to go off the edge of the road, and the crews are working with those as fast as they can. Our dirt roads, number one, basically washed away, and they're dealing with those. We have people whose driveway edges down at the bottom got washed away. So there's a lot to repair, and they anticipate that over the next six weeks or so, we may be able to get back to where we were. They managed to get materials, more materials today, which is great. They were also down two trucks, and the excavator exploded, basically. So they'll need about $15,000 to fix that excavator, which they still want to use even when the new, bigger excavator comes in. It would be worthwhile to have it fixed. So, other than that, it's been lively, lively beyond that. So, any questions? Selectmen's briefing.
No, just, I mean, please send our kudos both to the, I'm sure you have, the Highway Department and the Fire Department. I know they were out there in the midst of all this going on also, and thank God, all those folks and their dedication.
And Mike Gardner. He's been terrific to work with. I will tell you that I was in touch with Erica Wazinski over in Wellington for this last storm, and they really got hit. It was amazing. What I saw in video was a road that had, all the pavement just came up, and the whole thing was going down a river. It looked like a river. So she called an emergency in her town, and they're still working with that. So, and also, we were a bit short on our crew for the work, because some of them were actually out of town for a wedding, et cetera, and some came back. So, yes, kudos to all of them. Here from Boards, Commissions, Committees. I don't think we have anything other than we have our town, our futures on the agenda. Also, acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 6, with correction that should read Tuesday. It said Monday, July 6. It should read Tuesday, July 6. And Jeff Silversmith should be listed among the guests. And I see something here edited, Eastern Highlands Health Department appointment to reflect seconding and passage of motion to appoint. Correct spelling of Guskowski. So the minutes, yes, definitely that, we did have the second and the passage of that motion.
I will move the minutes as corrected.
Thank you. Second? Oh, the second, because I was there.
Yes.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain, Roger abstains. Right, Roger? Okay, old business, discuss reopening strategies, town facilities, establish policies related to the holding of board and commission meeting. So, this will be a little fun. Let me just make sure I've got this in order for you. Yep. Firstly, we expected to have the rest of our hybrid materials here for this morning, and actually before this morning, and the wrong thing came, the wrong things came in. So they have been reordered, and that's being addressed. Cheryl Baker is taking care of that. In the meantime, we haven't unlocked the front door, but what we are doing is, I had some people come today, didn't have appointments. They were here. It did interrupt some things I was doing, but I had them come up and see me in my office. Everybody's to wear masks when they come in the building, regardless. And we're ready to unlock that door as soon as we have the other hybrid materials. And all that material is, is kind of a gentle barrier at the doorways to control traffic, just walking into offices. A great example is the town clerk's office. They don't want a whole number of people piling up in there, waiting to be served. So it's a matter of a little thing that goes across the doorway, so they can let him one at a time to do that. That's merely managing traffic flow. We also will have that issue with our assessor, because they tend to walk right into her office as well. The, and the same goes for the Building Department. However, the tax collector's office, there's a natural barrier there. It's always been there, so she doesn't need something like that. And we have the most activity going on right now in the tax collector's and assessor's office. And we're finding a lot of people are using the phone to kind of make sure that they, you know, where they can get what they need for information, and a number of them are going out to the website, as we had hoped. They continue to do that. The other thing is, and I did forget to mention this under the selectmen's briefing, but I will mention it now, is there is a new process for obtaining gun permits that the state is putting in place. And you'll see Chris gently shake her head. It's in submission, because the system is very awkward. It requires that a person have an email address and go online, which is pretty limiting to people who don't have that. So Chris can tell you a couple of things about that. So in terms of people coming in to get their gun permits, instead, they would be, what, working with us to fill out a form, then going online? And if they couldn't go online themselves, then we have to help them go online? That basically it?
What it boils down to is people are going to have to pre-enroll to have their fingerprints checked by, through the FBI and the state. They're also going to have to pay no more with checks. It's going to have to be with credit cards. You know, and we'll do what we have to do. We'll see how it works. They didn't seem to have a whole lot of sympathy for people who did not have access to computers. That's the best I could say.
So we will do our best to help them. But that's going to require that, before we were just managing everything outside, they may need to come inside for that. It was easy.
Are we going to publish something, Catherine and the citizen, about the new state requirements regarding that?
We just went to the meeting this morning, and I was interrupted. Chris was on the session. It was a two-and-a-half-hour session. Training for it. So that's the first where they really started to talk about how this would work. We had tried to get answers. Chris had some very specific questions. She sent to them ahead of time, two, almost two weeks ago. Didn't get any response. The original presentation they were going to do was canceled, and then they put together this thing that was held today. And if I understand correctly, this goes into effect this Friday?
July 26.
July 26. Our state government at work. So.
I will try to write up something for the citizen.
But I don't know that it'll get into this one.
Yeah, it's not going to get into this one, and, you know, hopefully it won't be too hard to talk people through it. There's just a lot of information that the state is looking for.
Yeah, we can put it out on the website. We can put it out on the town's Facebook site, just so people know that there is a change, and they're first steps at least for going through the initial part of the process.
I believe that somebody during the question period asked for, they asked them to put together a handout for the public, and there was no real answer. So hopefully I'll push it tomorrow and see if they'll consider doing that.
The thing is, we had a handout for the public before.
But it doesn't have anything to do with this new fingerprint system?
No, no, but the other handout we had did say something about it. I think that was provided by the state.
No, we did, we made.
Oh, we did? So, and there's no crying allowed in public service? All right, so that was another update in terms of some of the things we're going to have to do a little differently here. Again, as soon as we have that last piece of PPE, we will open the doors. We are watching to see what kind of, if we get a wave of the, what is it, the variant? It is in Connecticut. We are concerned. So, and we still have people here who are compromised, or have family that's compromised and cannot be vaccinated. So we're trying to be mindful of that as well. Let's see. Electronics relating to the holding of hybrid meetings. If you'll indulge me for a minute, I just want to tell you, we have basically three options for meetings. And I have a letter that is set to go out to the chairs of all town boards, commissions, and committees. I'm sending it to the selectmen, just so you have a quick review before I send it out. And what it does is it offers three options. And I'd like the boards to provide their information via email to this email address, so that it can assist the Board of Selectmen in planning for the location and/or technology needs of these boards. There, the three choices are in-person, like pre-COVID-19, fully remote, which is solely by electronic means, and hybrid, which is combined in-person and remote. I will tell you, it's my understanding that there are a couple of boards already that are looking to go hybrid. So for in-person, what has to happen is any agency, and that means any board, that conducts an in-person-only meeting shall provide members of the agency the opportunity to participate by means of electronic equipment. That is, Bill, if you weren't unable to attend an in-person meeting, then, and you wanted to attend, you could attend, we would, you could attend either by phone or by Zoom, a Zoom phone, or whatever, because you're on the board. We don't have to make that accommodation to anybody who is not on the board. Okay, and if we're holding that kind of a meeting, I think that if that, if that member loses their connection to the meeting, or otherwise becomes degraded or interrupted, that's not anything to stop the meeting for unless the presence of such member is required to maintain a quorum. So that applies to us. It applies to any other board that might choose to meet in person. So the pros for this, it fully puts us back in the realm of FOIA. There's a comfort to it, since we've been doing this for decades. In-person interaction at public meetings has been cited as something that has been missed. Looking someone in the eye and not through a screen can help build relationships and foster understanding. Sometimes virtually, things can be lost and intent can be misconstrued. It's not as if that can't happen in an in-person meeting too, but seems to be harder to follow in the other kind of meeting. The, some of the cons to this is, some of the members, some members of the public will not be able to participate in person for whatever reasons, whether it's a matter of they can't, or they choose not to do it in person. Board members may, okay, so the board members can request to participate remotely. They're the only ones that can. Fully remote meetings are solely by electronic means, and they must be noticed at least 48 hours in advance as such. In other words, it's going to be a remote-only meeting. There's up to 25 hour, four hours, 24 hours in advance. The agenda would need to be finalized. So there is that special thing of 48 hours, letting people know that it is a fully remote meeting. There's a reason for it. If it's a regular meeting being held solely by electronic means, and a member of the public makes a written request to the agency not less than 24 hours prior to the meeting, the agency must make available to that member of the public a physical location and the electronic equipment necessary to allow them to attend in real time, and the same opportunity to participate and comment as applicable, as if the meeting were held in person. This requirement does not apply to special meetings, regular meetings. And Michael, Mike, I know you're on there. Let me know if I say something you disagree with.
Okay.
Thank you. The, if the member of the public loses their connection to the meeting, or otherwise, it otherwise becomes degraded or interrupted by that person, it's not, you just keep going with the meeting. You don't stop it. So, again, what it means is if it's purely remote and a regular meeting, someone requests, and someone requests in writing to be accommodated, we have to arrange for a location and equipment for that person to view and participate. So if you have one person, and most people who are going to ask to participate in a remote meeting that don't have the equipment, probably don't know how to do it. You'll need somebody to assist them. You'll need a location for them. So, the pros for this one, our remote meetings tend to have a higher petition, participation rates than in-person meetings. It's a convenience for board members, town staff, guests, and residents to participate from home and not to have to drive home afterwards. People at higher risk can participate without having to come in person and subject themselves to risk, which is what we did under the executive order. The cons, the time limit for arranging for a physical location, the technology required to meet a requester's need, and an individual to oversee or assist the requester's use of the technology is only 24 hours. So, you have to make special arrangements. If there are multiple requesters, additional locations, technology components, and overseers or assistants may be needed. The cost impacts would be for the technology needed for the requestor to participate in the meeting, and staff time to oversee the space where the accommodation is taking place. Another con is some people have cited minor trouble with remote meeting software or possible issues stemming from disabilities resulting in aversion to the technology. You know, some have mastered it over time. Others have maybe given up. Okay, so that is option number two. Option number three is hybrid, which is combined in-person and remote. And this allows the boards of the public to meet in-person and remotely in one meeting. A factor to consider with this option is who will facilitate the electronic portion while participants are in the room, keeping in mind cybersecurity. Well, the town is contracted with Tyke Planning and Policy Group LLC to manage our Zoom and GoTo meetings. Mike is one of the people who is one of the principals in that company. And they do the recording and security aspects of all our board meetings, and it's planned through June 2022. So they're already on board. We've already contracted with them. We did this early, early on. We're also contracted with Savage Systems LLC to provide IT services to the town on an ongoing basis. Those are people that Cheryl interacts with, to make sure we're set up with all of our machines, et cetera. So Tyke and Savage are working together to identify and price technical, technical, components needed to support hybrid meetings. They expect to provide that information to the selectmen's office within the next two weeks. Also, this technology meets the requirements for the American Rescue Plan funding. Mike, did I misstate anything there in talking about how you and Tyke are, we're going to gather? I'm sorry, you and Savage?
No, not that I, not that I think of. We're going to try to utilize any existing technology and infrastructure to reduce costs where we can.
And, and I just want to say how much I very much appreciate your help, Mike. It's been invaluable in looking at this, and the fact that you're working so well with Savage.
No problem.
I know that you were both looking at different options, and I'm hoping what comes up is something that truly works for Ashford. And our focus at this time is on the town office building, and what we can do to support hybrid meetings in the rooms in here. So the pros are, depending on the participant's comfort level with attending public meetings in person or attending remotely, almost everyone can be accommodated using a hybrid approach. Those who wish to come in person may do so. Those who wish to stay home and participate may do so as well. Cons, someone needs to be responsible for setup of the equipment for the meeting. Someone needs to be trained in use of the technology and be responsible for the meeting happening without interruption. And protocols will need to be established to ensure decorum and fair participation between remote and in-person participants. And that may, the chair may need some help in terms of monitoring one or the other. I'm assuming maybe monitoring the people that are on virtual, while if the chair is in the room, looking at the other people, which could make, for whoever who is helping him with that, that might make that person a bit distracted in terms of the content of the meeting. So again, we're looking at the technology to support, to support hybrid. We already know that there are a couple of boards that are probably going to want to use that, and we might as well be planning for that anyway. It is good to know that it meets the criteria for the American Rescue Fund, Rescue Plan funding. So, and I'm hoping it is not a big ticket item. And again, we're focused on the town office building. We'll get to Knowlton as soon as we can. But right now, mostly town office building first, because that's where people need to hold their meetings right now. Any questions about that?
I've got a couple of quick ones.
Sure.
Regarding the hybrid proposal.
Yep.
Is there any special legislation or statute that's going to have to be tweaked in order to put that in place?
Not to my knowledge. What we have is what the bill was. Then we have what was signed, which is the same. And then we have information that we've gotten from Halloran and Sage, which was looking at the original implementer bill. And then we have what the Connecticut Freedom of Information Commission has, they've issued an informal summary. So, you know, I looked at all of those, plus the implementer bill itself. So to me, the implementer bill is really, no one has indicated they needed to tweak any other legislation for it.
So the implementer bill incorporates FOIA and any definition regarding special meetings?
Let's say, let's say this, the implementer bill went further than FOIA wanted to go. They put some things in there that FOIA was saying, that's not really, shouldn't be done that way, but FOIA had no voice in it. So then they looked at the bill and they said, okay, here's what we, this is what our interpretation of what this means from a FOIA perspective. And that's an informal thing at this point, but it's all we have to go with. And part of the delay in even putting this out is because things changed in terms of what they were saying things were. And I'm delighted that we had something from FOIA, because without that, we wouldn't have picked up on a couple of things that were not as intuitively obvious in the bill. There's more in terms of the, you know, how things have to be recorded and all of that. But right now, for our boards to make a decision, they just need the facts about, general facts about what you have to do for the different types of meeting. So one thing I will be, I'm asking you, Roger and Bill, is, you know, we have to make a decision about how we want our meetings conducted. And each board gets to decide for themselves. You know, I look at, I look at us as, the town as, how are we making sure that their needs are met in order for them to conduct business? So they decide, we implement. And so for us, let's decide. What's your preference?
I mean, I'm leaning towards the hybrid, but again, want to know what the costs are going to be.
Okay, well, um, costs are going to be covered by the rescue plan.
Well, it's great as long as the rescue plan's in effect.
It is in effect. We've already gotten the money.
Okay.
I think he said it's long. One of the problems, we go into something, and any of these grants or the rescue funds we get suddenly run out, and then we're left holding the bag to, to pay for it, to go, go further, go for additional time.
So I'm not thinking that this is going to cost a ton of money to do this. It is something where we need to, again, I don't think it would only our board be the one that wants hybrid. So, you know, my, my thinking is, we plan on doing that anyway, and it's a matter of, okay, let's assume that's in place. Now, what's your druthers?
Well, I'm still leaning towards the hybrid.
What about you, Bill?
I'm leaning towards the hybrid. I have another question, though, perhaps Mike can. Does, does Mansfield presently record their meetings?
Mansfield has a different sort of combination of technology. Last I heard from them, they use a company called Town Hall Streams, which, which streams their, their meetings directly to local cable access. And so because they have that set up with local cable channel, they can broadcast directly to TV, so you can go online and watch it, or you can watch it through your television, but that means they don't necessarily need to have Zoom.
So Mike, with that, they don't really have people who are not physically present participating in the meetings. They, they just view them afterwards. Is that correct? Or they aren't able to interject or whatever?
Right, I think, it's been some time since I talked with Linda, but the way that they were running it last time we spoke was that only people that were, I guess, for lack of a better word, speaking or presenting, were given access to the GoToMeeting account. Everybody else watched via the internet or their television, and then they would call in during the appropriate points in time to actually get their, their thoughts.
Oh, so they could call in, okay.
Now, if you had an individual that through FOIA made a request for copies of the minutes or whatever, would the town be responsible, Mike, to supply those in video form as well as written form?
Well, I guess, I mean, if someone wants the minutes, then I would give them the written document, because that's what the board will, would have approved at the subsequent meeting. If they wanted a recording, then if it was within that 45-day window that was specified, then, then. was specified, then, then we would want to provide it to them. But all of our recordings, I mean, I, I looked online, we have like a hundred and eighty something recordings. So those are all available to anybody who wants them.
And would, would the cost to make those available to the public be borne by the person making the inquiry or by the municipality?
We're posting Ashford's recordings on YouTube. We've been doing that right along. There is no cost associated. So anybody can, can watch those. Um, they can, they can, uh, they can't, don't believe they can download them, but perhaps they can. So there's no account. There's no costs. We're not paying any storage or hosting. It's all free.
Cause I believe during John Zulik's administration, when we were designing the town office building there, we worked with the architects and we were trying to set up that large room downstairs to video whatever meetings any particular board wanted or the board of selectmen. And, and it was a long time ago now, but.
It was actually during, it wasn't during, it wasn't during Zulik's, um, administration. It was during Ralph Fletcher's.
We were in design during Zulik's.
Okay.
Ralph took over when we went into construction with town, town office building. But the concern was that there were going to be costs involved, that if we were actually filming, um, each of the meetings and we had an individual request copies of those, it would be the town's responsibility to supply those. And the, one of the concerns I believe that was raised was what was the potential cost of that.
This is a very different technology than, than what we were using. We were doing basically tape recordings.
Yeah. I don't think we actually ever implemented it because there were too many gray, gray areas there and the systems ultimately got installed, couldn't accommodate even what we were anticipating we might consider.
Right. So with this one, if I understand correctly, Mike, um, there is no cost. The person can get the link. Um, if it's a matter of them wanting the, um, video and we have decided to start purging them because we want to get rid of historical documents for whatever reason, um, then, um, they would be relying on the minutes, which is no different than they had to before. And I think maybe the only difference was, and, and perhaps Mr. Silversmith can respond to this, is that for planning and zoning, was there a requirement to, um, record the meetings back when or now?
Uh, I don't know what to say, except I love watching Mike's head bob, which gives me lots of good clues. So. Um, I can't, I, and maybe Mike can shed more light on this. As a requirement, I don't know. I know we did do the DVD recordings of the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, meetings as well as doing minutes. And if I may, before Mike answers that, what I wanted to just say was have they given any indication from the, uh, bills and the, um, uh, new rules to go by as to the requirement for recording, electronic, digital recording of, um, the meetings activities as well as maintaining minutes also? Or can you do one or the other? Or, uh, has that been given, has that been given any, uh, thought or any consideration?
Okay. So here's what I see for, uh, minutes for regular and special meetings using electronic equipment. The minutes for a meeting during which any member of the public agency participates using electronic equipment must list the members who attended the meeting in person and those members who attended the meeting using electronic equipment. The minutes must be made available and posted in accordance with the provision, provisions of section one dash two, two, five of the FOI Act.
So minutes and recording are two separate things.
Yes. Well, yes, minutes are required no matter what. Recording, uh, let's see.
So the only thing I'll add and just to back up a little bit, just to clarify or, or answer. Yeah. So when we have, when we have a public hearing or like for some of these town meetings or some of these other things where the, where the obligations to maintain those recordings are, are, are separate and, and aside from the fact that it's a virtual meeting, then we would not purge that recording within 45 days. So if, for example, a recent, the recent text amendment application that PCC just heard, 45 days from now, we will not purge that recording because that will serve as the public hearing recording, which we're obligated to keep. So there's a caveat there that if the virtual meeting recording is the only recording of a meeting which had a hearing, then we would maintain that. And you know, what I, what I've been doing and we can do in Ashford is basically going through and downloading those and those can sit locally as well to sort of take the place of the, the tape deck or disc or whatever we used to do when it was in person if we would record a hearing.
And was that a requirement, Mike, of PNC or is that just for the hearings?
Any hearing of any board had to be recorded and maintained. Yep.
But the, not the meetings themselves.
Correct. Just the public hearing portion of that meeting.
Thank you.
Jeff, isn't that the way it, it's always been with the PNC with public hearings?
Well, we were, we were recording everything.
Right. Everything?
From the time I've been on, we were recording everything up until the DVD player broke.
Okay.
So, uh, I think, uh, and sometime in there, you know, obviously we were also, we've also been doing audio recordings of that too. Once the DVD player broke, we were doing audio recordings, uh, until some decision was made or some technology availed us to fixing the situation.
Okay.
And you can imagine how, um, ineffective audio recordings are when a person doesn't say who is speaking. One of the things that people should get used to with both hybrid and Zoom meetings is to make sure that they say their name before they speak. So that it's properly recorded. So people know who it was or is. Okay. Especially if you had a whole slew of people on and you had multiple, uh, windows open. All right.
This is Bill Falletti, and I will just say in answer to your question, in concept, I, I like the hybrid idea. Time will tell. And, and any of these things, I think what we have to do is try to look at a, a sort of a trial basis when we put these in and figure out, you know, where we may have to adjust from one point to another.
Right. And if we don't, if we don't do that, we don't get anywhere with it. We have to start. Uh, and I, like I said, I don't think that we, ours would be the only board. So if I understand correctly, we three are in agreement. The hybrid is what we aim to do. And we will get there as quickly as we can get there, um, based upon what we find out about the technology. And it is my understanding that this technology, um, these, this, uh, need uh, can be satisfied through American Rescue Funds. So.
I think in concept, what we're all trying to do, I, I don't want to speak for you and Roger, but I, I think what we want to do is encourage more and more participation of our residents and taxpayers in town to know what's going on and, and actually get involved. Uh, I know that, that's what my goal is.
Yeah. I can tell you that, um, we certainly have a situation, uh, where um, we have our volunteers are, uh, becoming fewer and fewer. And, um.
That's not only a local or state trend, that's a national trend, unfortunately.
Right. And so we want to be able to find ways to engage the public and have them get, uh, fully engaged with the community as much as we can. So. All right. The, uh, okay. So that is considering the electronics. Uh, then, uh, discuss, the next item on the agenda is discuss proposed Tremco House project. Uh, trying to remember his name, Robert.
Heard.
Thank you. By the way, um, Jeff Silversmith, this is what Christine does for me, which you do for me at home. She fills in the missing words, missing nouns. Um, okay. So Robert Heard has not, uh, he has said that he would provide, uh, his, uh, plan for the $5,000 uh, to come up with a plan for, uh, stage plan for, uh, renovating, if you will, the Tremco House and, uh, was going to do that by last, last Friday.
No, two Fridays, three Fridays.
So the Friday before.
Yeah.
And then he was going on vacation. So he did not do that. I'm pretty close to cutting bait on this because we've gone back and forth four times or more on this. And I know he told me he was swamped at work uh, and was most apologetic. He said he's very interested, but nothing's coming out of it. So, um, I'm not that eager to go off and try and find someone else to come up with a brand new plan for the place when he was the one who helped put together the original plan. What do you other selectmen think?
Well, we talked about this briefly two weeks ago and I, I was of the opinion it's time to start shopping around and see if we can come up with anybody else. Um, I mean, we've been dancing with this thing now for years. Um, and I, I know, I know Bob, I know he's very competent, but I, if he doesn't have the time to do it, I think there's a point where we gotta come up with an alternate plan.
So here's one of the things that I've found out. Um, the Tremco House is sitting in a very wet place. It has what? A dirt basement, correct? And it is right, uh, what they were looking to do was build basically onto the back of it, which takes it into the flood plain.
Which they found they could not do.
Which they can't do, which is where they wanted to put their vault.
And if you look, if you looked at the vault, that project was a minimum at the time, and we're talking years ago, which I'm sure is probably doubled by now. At that time it was between 200 and $250,000.
Yes. So has anybody ever done a plan for Ashford Academy? Which could be used, it's much bigger. It could be used for arts. It could be used for all kinds of things. It could be a, um, also be a, what do we call it? A, uh, uh, information center for the town? You know, for visitors, visitor, visitor center. Um, has anybody thought about that? I realize that it's out of ways from what people are trying to make our.
It's been thought about and discussed for years. And my recollection was the Historical Society historically had a problem with that.
Okay. Um, the town owns the, the academy. Is that correct?
And we picked up most of the maintenance and all of the workload to maintain the building now for years.
Correct. Um, it just, uh, uh, the Tremco House is never going to be ADA compliant when all is said and done, because they're looking at doing it upstairs that you couldn't get up, you know? You can't put something ADA compliant in that small building to get upstairs.
And it certainly wouldn't be multi-use, you know?
No, it wouldn't. Very, and very, you know, cramped. I will tell you that in its unused state, every single year it fills up with mold. Right now, that's how it looks. So the only way you'd get the mold out is to take down all the wallboard or whatever up that's up there. Um, and it is my understanding it happens every year and it's probably because of where it sits. So I don't know what.
You don't have that mold problem at the building that abuts that, you know, the old post office. And I, I don't believe the Historical Society wanted to even consider a hearing about it, but some of the thought was going through the wall there, opening up the floor of the Tremco House to expand what's presently being used as a, a meeting hall sort of thing with the old post office and do it that way.
That's interesting.
And then you could just address one ADA issue on one of the two buildings there. And a lot simpler. And that's why the more we talk about this, and we probably need a meeting just to talk about this. I'd get some minds and new thoughts in there to come up with some alternatives. Because I've, as much as I wanted to accommodate the, the Historical Society and make that a visitor's stop off because of its logistics on 44, the town office building. I'm, I've never been real convinced that's the best use of practically use of that building.
That's what I'm kind of finding out. All right. So are you saying a special selectman's meeting for us to talk about this?
I think so. I, um, who's the gentleman in town that's an architect? I think we appointed him to the, uh, uh, Ashford School Committee.
John Talgo.
Yeah. I wonder if John would be interested in coming in and taking a look and at least talking to us about that. I know he's been involved in, in town polit, uh, town affairs for years.
Um, the only thing I would say is whoever we do have do that can't be the person who is bidding on the work.
I'm not so sure. Is, is, is John still licensed architect, Chris? Do you know?
He's still a licensed architect, but he is retired from the city of Hartford. Now he travels around the country doing consulting.
So we would be hiring him to do consulting.
If he so chose, I mean, I, we could just get some opinions from him.
We can try. All right. Let me see what we can find out about that and get something set up. The, uh, at least to, you know, see if there's another alternative for this.
Catherine, this is Dick Williams. If I can.
Dick, is this something we're going to talk about under your, our town, our future presentation?
No, it's, it's on this subject because, uh, long ago and far away, we were once involved in looking at this whole thing with the Tremco House. And, and the real problem is that no one is defined what they really want to do with the place.
Well, they definitely had plans for what they were going to do with it. Uh, we saw what the architectural plans were.
Yeah. But I mean.
They have a copy of them.
Yeah. And I've, I've seen all that. And frankly, to store all the historical records over there was, was a pipe dream. And, and a lot of the, we had town hearings, we had public meetings. Uh, a lot of this was hashed out and with very unrealistic expectations from the Historical Society. So.
So what we'd like to do is we'd kind of like to come up with something more realistic, more inclusive for the town. It's not just for the Historical Society. Uh, the other thing too, is we do have an issue with, um, the Historical Society. Um, as fond as I am of them, they are storing some materials in our vaults that should not be put in the vault. They are materials of theirs. They're everything from, you know, they're, they're not appropriate for storing in a vault with paper materials that are important records for the town. You know, giant teddy bears, uniforms, you know, unwrapped, whatever. Those are not appropriate. And so, uh, at some point we're going to have to figure out where best for them to keep their, um, their, their stuff. We certainly have our, uh, we have our historian's office here and there are some very important records and research that was done that's in that office. But it will not accommodate the things, the rest of the things that the Historical Society, Society has amassed. So, uh, I'm looking at, um, we have another closet situation downstairs that is, um, uh, what's the word I want to use is air controlled, if you will, that perhaps we could set up some bins or, uh, some kind of a container for their stuff to get it out of the vault and put it in there instead. At least temporarily until they have a place to keep them, keep the materials that they, where they want to keep them. But they don't belong in the town vault. They're only the town's materials. Uh, so, um, they won't be happy to hear that, but we're trying to figure out some way to make sure that we're able to preserve the things we do have in our vault with having, without having them pick up extra moisture, et cetera, from these other things.
And Catherine, my only reason for piping up is that this is a road that's been down, uh, multiple times.
I've been here too.
So just, you know, look, look at the history and try to find the, uh, the best reason to use the building for the town's purpose rather than strictly Historical Society.
Right, right. And that's what we're trying to do is take that broader view and we've come up with something that serves both the Historical Society and other, um, groups within the town. So, thank you. And I'm sure, um, when we're talking with our town, our future, in the future, uh, we'll be talking about that as well. Okay. Uh, next, what do we have here? New business. Authorized professional engineering services to be performed by Consulting Engineering Services Incorporated. Services would include building assessments of the existing mechanical, electrical, plumbing and fire protection systems. Actually, I think we have, uh, one more piece of that that I forgot to put on here, which is. protection systems." Actually, I think we have one more piece of that that I forgot to put on here, which is air quality as well, and fire protection.
You could put that in as HVAC systems.
Thank you. HVAC, very good. Which is where we kind of started with this, and then we went, wait a minute, let's make sure we're looking at the whole thing. And that's for the town office building, Knowlton Memorial Hall, Ashford Senior Center, and Pompey Hollow Park Senior Housing. So as I have mentioned to the other selectmen before, but I'll just say in passing to everybody else, is that I contacted, we contacted a group called CES. I forgot what they stand for, but they were recommended. They're on the bid list, if I recall, as well. State bid list, but reached out to them, and I asked one of their people to come out here. And we walked the four buildings so that that person could get the lay of the land, understand the general square footage, and see what they were working with. We even showed them the, the two prison cells that are in Knowlton Hall from the very bottom. Talked about that history, but went down there where we have a frog colony, I might add. The, and then we went over to Ashford Senior Center, Pompey Hollow Park Senior Housing. I was really amazed at how well they managed their, the downstairs where the basement where they have everything is pristine down there. Terrific. But we were looking at, again, they were getting the lay of the land. So I asked them for an estimate and then reached out to another firm that had done, reviewed the school before. And Chris, please remind me of their name.
Friar Associates.
So reached out to them and had an embarrassing moment because I said, hey, I would like you to come out, take a look at these buildings, do the same thing I've just done with the other company. And in the course of everything, the person said, we're really familiar with your buildings. And they would use CES. They would actually subcontract to CES to do the assessment. So I think we might have gone to the right place in the first place. The, you, both of you selectmen have their estimate. I think the overall total is $14,000 and change. And that, those monies can also come from the American Rescue Fund. So I would like to, I would like us to pursue this. It will allow us to create a plan for these buildings. We may not be able to do everything. And certainly not able to do everything in a, you know, short period of time, but there may be some low-hanging fruit that's pretty obvious. I think Bill, you and I at one point talked, mentioned something about, and certainly the person pointed it out to me, that the heating in the, in Knowlton is completely inefficient. And we're actually paying more for that than we ought to be. Not only that, they just turn on one of the heaters, one of the heat sources, and the people up in the library, I guess the main office there or whatever, it ends up being unbelievably hot in there. So they can only use one of the heating things, but they're doing, they're still doing double heating.
Catherine, you mentioned that Roger and I got copies of their proposal? I don't remember seeing that.
That was for email to you on Friday.
It was?
Yep.
I saw the agenda come in.
It was with it.
They were attached to the agenda.
Okay, I'll double-check. So their scope of work is included in what was sent to us then, Catherine?
Yes.
Yes, it was. Let me just see if I can pull that.
I believe you answered this already to me, Catherine, but was there, we know when they did that last report at the school? How long ago was?
Chris, you could probably refresh everybody's memory. It was some time ago when they did the assessment at the school.
I think Friar did it in 2012 or 13, I think. But they're still working off that. The Building Committee is still working off that assessment with Friar. So they are still actively involved in the school building thing.
One of the things that I'd like to ask them, given the scenario that we're in as a result of our COVID-19 experiences, are there any modifications to their overall scope or their recommendations that, for instance, I sound like a broken record about these MERV-13s, but I've also done a little research on them and looked at what the comparisons are with the, all of the MERV of a lower grade. The MERV-13 is the only one that filters viruses.
So when you're talking about the MERV-13, are you talking about it in relation to the school?
Anywhere we have a ventilation or HVAC system in any building we have.
So this is something we would ask the school building committee, which has been formed just for the school.
Can we do that?
Yeah. To see if they've looked at that in any, in any way.
See if they looked at that, and we can certainly let them know that we have, they're familiar apparently with CES. Ask them if there's anything on the plan that he has developed back in 2010 or 13, whatever it might have been, that needs to be revisited.
Well, we can do that, and that's part of their plan. There would be part of their planning for the school, which we've treated separately. When it comes to these other buildings, what do we want to do here?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm in favor of getting them into all of our other buildings, but the school is a town building, and it's our largest building. And if these funds are going to be covered by these federal funds that are coming...
They have funds too. The school has funds too.
But the two, the $1.2 million over two years is, is separate from the funds they have, right?
Correct. That's my understanding. Chris, you don't know anything different than that, right?
As far as I know, that's, they have their own funds.
Yes. So, but Bill, what I will do is I will look into it to see, make sure that we're really clear about how they can use their funds. You know, again, it gets a little dicey looking at this stuff, and we haven't focused on what the school has received because they're accountable for managing that. And they, they get their information differently than we do. You know, we're getting stuff that goes to the municipality itself.
I don't want to open up a bag of worms here, but we've all been a little concerned about the way they report and manage that stuff, but I'm...
I have a lot of confidence in our building committee, though. We have a really strong one.
I do too, but, you know, if these are legitimate expenses, and if they're getting it from another pool that we're not aware of, at minimum, we ought to recommend that they take a look at that. And the only other thing I was going to say, typically, the the housing authority is a separate entity in their building than we are, separate funds. Is that, have we, to see if that's a legitimate expenditure? The funding that we're going to be getting to put it into doing an assessment at the elderly housing?
Who owns the building?
We own the building.
I don't believe we do own the building. We leased the land, but I don't believe we own the building. I believe they own the building. We own the water system. Or we used to own the water system, rather. It's separate entity, but I do not believe we own that building.
So you said it was leased? Who was it leased to?
We leased, I believe, if I recall, we're going back 25 or 30 years ago. But we did a separate lease to the Ashford Housing Authority from the town of Ashford. A ground lease, leasing them the land that the building was built on.
Okay, so, again, oh, the land, you're saying the land we own, the building we don't?
That's, that's my recollection, and I certainly stand to be corrected if I can be, but that was my, that's my recollection of that scenario.
Okay. Well, we know we own the other three buildings. We can confirm that we own senior housing.
And we thought about the highway garage, Catherine. Is there anything that this firm could do to take a look at the systems at the highway garage?
I didn't see that. I also didn't see that as as much of a priority as the other. Because when you look at what they've got, they're, they're such a different animal. Their garage, they've got the open ventilation, they've got the, all of that inside of there. I can certainly ask them, but I was kind of focused on the ones where we have, you know, a lot of people in them all day long. And the garage, most of the time, the guys are out working.
Most of the time.
Yeah.
I've gone through storms when they're actually sleeping there.
I don't know that they're sleeping there these days, but yep, I can understand that.
Food for thought. If we're trying to be, you know, as comprehensive, and we're looking under the definition of town building between the school and the highway garage and the town buildings.
So are you saying wait on doing these?
No, I would get going on those, but I would certainly look into these other buildings.
Very good. I have no problem with that. That's, that's fine.
I'm not looking to call anything or to postpone it. I'm also supportive of doing an environmental assessment audit of our buildings when it comes to the heating and whatever other situations they may have, but those are town buildings.
Very good. Okay, so we will definitely look at that, include that. Thank you for the idea. Is there anything else, any other buildings that we feel that we need to do that with in the near future? I can't think of any.
I mean, the only other building that I could think of is, of course, I don't think we want them to look at the academy, is the dog pound.
Dog pound, huh. Yeah.
Dog pound, we had a steep grant eight or nine years ago. We put in a split system to air condition, dehumidify, and heat. We still have propane heat that we use during the winter. But during summer, warm, humid weather, we use the split system, which works very efficiently, and...
We've had no complaints from the residents, right?
The residents don't complain. They're happy for the air conditioning.
But if we're talking about surveys, you should check the fire department too.
Yes, very good.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, so what I'd like to do is, I would like to get a motion to proceed with the, I think I need a motion to proceed with the Professional Engineering Services.
I will make a motion to authorize an expenditure up to the $14,000 and change for the buildings that they have presented so far. And with the, you know, with the understanding that you're going to call to their attention these other buildings that we brought up.
Yes, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to us getting the information so we have a good plan for all of them. Okay, going on to Our Town, Our Future presentation. Now, selectmen, you have received information from Our Town, Our Future. You both have their nice packet. I will, as they go through their presentation, hopefully there'll be some things that they'll see that we're already working on. You know what? Did I miss something here? I just want to make sure I didn't. Did we talk about? Oh, what we're going to talk about after that is communication strategies. I just want to mention to, I think it's, Dick, I think it's going to be you that's speaking to this, or Mike Gantic, Mike Gantic, about communication strategies. We certainly have already started and have some information about some communication strategies that we're looking at. So we were already working on that when we got your summary, just so you know. All right, so who wants to talk?
I will go forth. I first want to thank, on behalf of the Our Town, Our Future Core Committee and Economic Development Committee, the opportunity to come here this evening just to get some feedback from the board of selectmen. For both the Our Town, Our Future and the EDC have, for some time, been looking at the Route 4474 corridor relative to a variety of issues and opportunities that may present themselves. And as far as, I know personally, that for at least dating back 15 years, it started off with a kind of visionary outreach that I think Ray Fen had done with, coordinated with the Green Valley Institute to kind of give some ideas on what could be done to make it more of a presence there on Route 4474 corridor. But we've also had, recently, the Our Town, Our Future had some stakeholder meetings where we've gotten input from, back from the public. We also have the 2015 Plan to Conservation and Development. It's having some goals and recommendations relative to that corridor in particular. And also, we had a 2018 Road Safety Assessment, an RSA, that identified some goals and recommendations as well for that area for a number of opportunities. And for, there's basically four opportunities, or four issues that presented themselves that come out of this. There's a lot of detail to those, but first would be, one of the things that has come out as one of the, Ashford doesn't have an identity as short, really to create kind of a Ashford identity. As you're driving along Route 44, and you drive by the town hall, you come to the stoplight at 89, you see a sign that says Ashford, two miles up the road. So I think, you know, we're probably a little bit lost relative to where Ashford really is, in a sense, for the traveling public. And, you know, keep in mind, we have over 10,000 vehicles a day that travel 44 and close to 1,000 that are on Route 74. The second thing would be to, you know, some, we had, kids from Yukon also provide some visioning on that area and connect, provide a connection between Warrenville and West Ashford Centers, whether that be pedestrian, bicycle, on some way to, you know, again, create some sense of it's more than just a superhighway, which then brings us to think about, really, the road, as we've seen, the number of complaints we've seen, the accident history and things. Really, we've really got to look at road safety and, and address some of the accident history. And along with that, more recently too, has been a lot more of a perception, I think, the reality of speeding along that section of road as well. And with that comes car crashes, truck crashes that are more significant in what results as far as injuries and property damage. So, again, they're looking at that, and this has been going on, I guess, for several years. The Our Town, Our Future and, you know, the Economic Development Commission have looked and said, oh, what can we do? And there's really two approaches here, and that's what I think we really want to kind of get the feedback of from our selectmen tonight is, you know, the one approach is, does the town take the initiative? Obviously, these are state roads, and as we've learned in the past, in some of our road safety assessment, you know, you've got to do a lot of pushing and pulling sometimes with the state to get them to do some things on, along their roadways that would benefit not only the traveling public, but for, you know, more importantly, the businesses and the citizens of Ashford. And then the second approach obviously would be to really engage and, you know, get the DOT to step up the plate and do something as well. So within the context of, you know, the information sheet it provided to the board of selectmen on the, you know, there are programs and projects, programs that are out there where the town could initiate and undertake and get some of these more specific things done along the corridor there to address, you know, the, basically, you know, engineering terminology, their vertical and horizontal geometry. Some of the issues with the sense of it being a speedway, sort of, you know, just on how people feel driving down the road, the comfort or what they see or don't see that really drives driver kind of conditions and behavior. So like I said, I listed a bunch of things, and I don't really want to get into the details here unless you want to talk about them, because a lot of them are specific projects. But I think, you know, I think where we want to look at is, you know, where do we go? Do we really want to initiate some things on the town's behalf, which would mean the town had to spend some money, even though they're state roads, believe it or not? And, or do we look to pursue some of the things that have been outlined in both Plan to Conservation and Development and the RSA, where we look to get the state to undertake some traffic studies? You know, as, you know, the controversy with what's going on with Cumberland Farms and how that evolved with the interest sways there and the sightlines and things. You know, there's things that could be accomplished by getting a... You know, there's things that could be accomplished by getting a bigger project in a sense. You know, some of the drainage issues that we've seen lately, um, also on forty-four. I think there's really something that could be done here in this quarter in particular. And obviously we have other issues at eighty-nine that are also maybe looked at at some point. But I think it's a matter of do we just continue to let the DOT take a lead here, do things, or do we look to take some initiative on doing things? Um, we've also had some, been out there. It's another vision or dream is also to have some bike, bike ways linking through various towns, including Ashford. Um, we do have a number of, of, you know, events that are take place here or have taken place, the Angel Ride and there's this other biking and and other events that have taken place here in Ashford that do utilize those routes. But I think it's a matter of also looking at, um, long term, you know, do we want to make this more of a, a place where when people drive down the corridor, they, they just aren't driving to get someplace else that they understand that people live here, it's a community. That there's other opportunities here. Um, there's a lot of activities relative to their trails and that type of thing. Um, so I think it's a matter of, you know, how, how do we look at, you know, kind of wrapping all these things in one, one big package actually would accomplish all the whole things we've talked about together. I mean, looking at road safety, even as the crossing there, um, the town put in the pedestrian crossing across from Long Knowlton Hall to the Pompey Hollow there. And that, that, you know, really probably should need, needs to be repaired and put in fixed. You know, there's a lot, the Ashford farmers market's really taken off the last few years. And so you have a lot more activity there. So I think, again, what we're really looking for is some direction as to whether we want as a town pursue things, as a town initiating some opportunity to kind of get things moving along. Do we want to further engage the state? Try to, you know, even probably pull in our, our state representatives, state senators to provide some help there as well. But I think, I think there's a, you know, we've heard a lot, I mean, certainly, um, the social media here in Ashford is just spoken a lot about the accident and speeding history. And I had pulled some information from, um, the Connecticut Crash Data Dispository. And for a period of about six years, we've had seventy-one accidents on along seventy-four, forty-four corridor, including some parts of Route eighty-nine. And thirty-seven of those, thirty-eight percent have resulted in injuries or in or death involving fifty, fifty people. So I mean, you know, even though we're out in the eastern Connecticut, the quiet corner here, I mean, it's not so quiet when it comes to some of these accidents and things. And, and we're, I think, relative to what the DOT looks at, probably isn't as significant as what's going on in accident history in Hartford, for instance, or Bridgeport or Danbury. But it still is significant that there's in a five-year period, fifty people have gotten injured in some way along and having seventy-one accidents of significance on state road. And these are state roads, by the way. This is, it doesn't include town roads. So, um, again, you know, looking forward for some direction, like I said, we can either initiate some projects and make some programs out there where, where the town could, and other towns have taken an, um, an, an opportunity to access some of that funding that's out there. You know, for different types of projects. And I think the other part would be, you know, or do we look at trying to get the state involved and, you know, see if they'll take some interest here in what's going on in Ashford. Obviously, these state roads, no matter what we do, the state's involved. Typically, if you're involving our, our local planning agency, which is the NICOG, that's how many, most of these projects, whether it's a state involved, one or a town involved, or town initiated, I should say. Um, they would go through those, the planning agency, the state. But I think, I think it's just a matter of trying to see where, where Art Town, Our Future and EDC, should we continue to look at these issues? Potential opportunities? Um, or do we, you know, do we spend our time on something else? Just trying to respond to what we've heard in the community and meetings and some things again, that are specifically outlined in the Plan Conservation Development. And that were identified for the RSA and for some of the public, and I know just to refresh the Board of Selectmen, the RSA, the Road Safety Assessment was done with a team, a cross-sectional team that involved Department of Transportation representatives or NICOG, town staff. We also had members of EDC, Art Town and Future. We also had some business people. We actually had some people from out of town, some professional representation from some people from other towns that came to assist on this. And we also had the Safety Circuit Writer and the people at Connecticut Transportation Institute at Yukon that actually helped facilitate this as well. So, um, you know, the recommendations that were put forth in that RSA was pretty significant in identifying things, all kinds of little things that could be done. And some things have been done. As you'll notice, the, there's been no parking signs that were put across from Cumberland Farms. On the state did realign the, uh, the pavement markings on seventy-four to where there've been some issues of passing zone, they've changed that. They did work on the signal up there to do some modifications, just to more of, um,
Which signal?
Have you pardon?
Which signal?
One at seventy-four and forty-four.
Actually, it's out.
Yeah, okay, that's a.
It's been out for a couple of days. I called nine-one-one to get it restarted and it's out.
But it's kind of a general overview, like it's like,
Yeah.
It's just a sense of, you know, where do we go? I mean, is this, is it, like I said, do we look through?
So I can ask a couple of questions?
Sure, sure.
Alright, I think I got, we got the gist of it plus what you had written as well. So if I understand correctly, our town, our future is really an advisory group or a committee off of the Economic Development Committee? Which is an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen?
No, the Art Town, Our Future is actually advisory to the Board of Selectmen.
Directly?
Yes.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Thank you by this looking.
Okay, I stand corrected. The, when you were talking about, and I'm sorry, you were kind of going along and I was trying to write as fast as I could in terms of some questions. When you talk about the study that was done, that was done in what year?
The Road Safety Assessment.
The RSA.
Yeah, that was in two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen. Alright, so not super current. The, um, when it comes to, uh, you know, I had looked at what has been, you know, was laid out by those students for the town. And, um, the topography kind of defies region, reason when I look at it. I need somebody from our town, our future, in terms of if you're supporting what was put there for sidewalks and bicycle paths and that kind of thing. I need someone to come with me to go out and ride, drive, drive that and walk parts of it. Because I looked at it and I went, I don't get how we could put that in there. And I, I want to, I want to understand. And I also want to make sure that I understand who, where, who's using it? To what end? You know, when we talk about putting sidewalks on Route seventy-four to connect things, who's, who's, who lives on Route seventy-four that's going to be walking there? And, you know, to walk from one little plaza to another, I mean, I'm more concerned about getting businesses in there. You know, and keeping the businesses going. Um, so I'm just trying to understand from a very practical logistical perspective, how those things could work. Because looking at the topography, we're built on a shelf. And so literally to put even sidewalks, if we're talking about putting sidewalks along Route forty-four, we'd have to blast and we'd have to take property or whatever, go into the property that the churches have, et cetera, to put sidewalks on that side. And what I think I saw was sidewalks on both sides. And during this storm, this last storm, we know that an entire side washed out into, uh, Tebow's Place. To the point where, I mean, the whole side is gone. They had to come back in and put riprap in there just to make it so people could safely drive down the road. So I did, don't see how sidewalks fit in. I also have some concerns, bicycle paths are great. But it's a matter of the size of the road. And when you look at what the requirements are for sizing on a road for bicycle paths, some of what's being proposed doesn't allow for that unless we somehow widen the road.
Yeah, Catherine, this is.
This is, I'm a layman, so, wait, let me, Michael respond to that. Um, I'm a layman, so to me, it's just kind of an obvious thing going along there. And I'm pretty good at logistics. So I want to understand, you know, how we think that could possibly work. I need to have somebody with me, I don't care if it's six of you, to just take, take me along and explain how you think that's going to work in those particular areas that are outlined.
Catherine, let me jump in here.
Mike, well, first of all, Mike, did you have anything else you wanted to say to that?
Well, I did one, yeah, I mean, I, I, those are, those are well, well-founded questions. It certainly is a, a challenge from that, an engineering perspective in one sense. But I think the bigger context here is, you know, if you look at, you know, the speeding, the, the sense of how the, that section of road looks to the traveling public. These things, you know, there are people that are using it for bicycles. So you'll be looking at a multimodal type of situation for.
Yeah, they're taking their life in their hands.
Yeah, well, they, I mean, that's possible, but that's one of the reasons you'd look to do this type of thing. So they aren't taking their life in their hands. But I think, I think it's a matter of, you know, if you look at it from a purity, from trying to fix the road from the speeding and accidents and all the drainage and everything else, those other components kind of are, are silatory to the road structure. And they begin to make you feel like, okay, I'm driving through someplace where there's people and it's, it's more than just a, a narrow, narrow road. It's, you know, downhill with trees and meets. When people are driving down there, they, they feel like, you know, there's nothing to be concerned about. They can go as fast as they can. When you have things that are more opened up and defined and, you know, better structured geometrically.
I actually agree with that concept.
Yep.
It's a matter of, I just want to go and look at practical application.
Yeah, it's, it's.
And I would really appreciate it.
Yeah, Catherine, if I can jump in here, you're, you're really mixing two studies together. And that's confused, no, you are, since I've been involved in the studies. Uh, the RSA is really a near-term effort that Yukon participated in a small way, not in a large way. It was really looking at ways to calm the traffic coming down from seventy-four to forty-four.
We get that.
Okay, there was another study that was done that was looking at a long-term effort to marry together West Ashford, West Ashford and Warrenville. And that had other long-term visions and things that was presented by the Yukon students.
Right. Now, what's in there are things that you're talking about when you talk about slowing the traffic. You're talking about having things where it looks more village-like as much as possible to get, and with, this is what I think Mike was saying. So that when they're coming through, they're feeling like they're in a village of some sorts, even though they're on a major state road. That they're having a sense of activity on the sides, uh, whether it's people walking or, or biking or whatever. And so when I look at it, I'm trying to look at both of them and being in context. It's not just one or the other.
Well, there's, one's near-term and one's long-term. The near, the near-term is associated with finding ways to calm the traffic coming down forty-four and seventy-four. And that, and that is, that is doing engineering studies that are, that take what was presented in the RSA to the next level. And that is, Catherine, can I finish my?
Actually, I just wanted to let you know that I have been in touch with our state representative and have not even been able, and I was supposed to be meeting with the head of DOT that was being arranged by our state representative, and so was actually the superintendent of the school. And what I found was that, um, we cannot get the meetings arranged. So just looking at trying to get the attention of DOT to be a participant in an aspect of a study for something that they would, they would have to approve is a little difficult. So I just wanted to let you know that we actually have been trying to do reach outs on some of this.
Okay, I, I'll defer to Mike on that since he's worked with them over years. But, but I really want to, but I really want to point out is there is a near-term and a long-term. The near-term is implementing the recommendations for the RSA, which never were acted upon, that we need to go forward as a town to bring DOT in. And if we have any trouble bringing in place Tammy and, and, and our, our representatives, I'll gladly help you do that because I'm sure they will support us.
I shouldn't, we shouldn't need your help. I mean, we are reaching out.
Okay, but number two, number two, it's the long-term is what was the thing that was proposed by the students some years ago. And, and if you look at what is done on Route ninety, one ninety, actually forty-four near the Four Corners, you see this bike path, pedestrian road that's parallel to the forty-four. That's the kind of thing that is thought about in terms of physically linking West Ashford to Ashford.
And I think that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, well, but that's the long-term. There's nothing to do with the RSA, totally nothing to do. It is totally part of the vision that was put forth with the study that the Yukon students did with us. We don't have Ray Fen, we don't have Ray Fen on the phone with us. But I'm told that there is possible without blasting ledges and things like that. Because this would not be absolutely adjacent to forty-four. But it could be done going up on the ledges, coming back through the land and eventually coming from West Ashford to Ashford. I was told by Ray, if he was here, he could talk more to it, but that there is some areas there. But really all that is being proposed is not to do it, but to look for funds to study to do it. That's, that's the thing, two separate things.
Right, I, I understand that. Okay, I, I tend to look at, I try to look at it from all angles. The, um, and also look at it in terms of, yeah, creating something that does, one, slow the traffic, but it creates a character for the town, if you will. I hate to use the word character because that's not a measurable thing. Um, but certainly looking at, you know, having a better understanding of who would actually be using these, you know, the volume of people that could be using these, whether it's sidewalks, whether it's bike trails or whatever. So we have a sense of, you know, how much use they would actually get. Because when you're talking about putting some things in here, you're talking about widening the roads. You're also talking about, in the case of what the students put forth, putting sidewalks down that the town would put down and they would have to maintain.
Catherine, there is absolutely no plans for sidewalks, absolutely none.
We only looked at what was provided.
Okay, the, the issue is to find a way to connect the two areas. And all is being proposed, and this is going back to what the students did, is to go and study what could be done. It is absolutely technically not feasible to try to put sidewalks along forty-four between West Ashford and Warrenville. That is, that's preposterous.
So, so that's what I saw when I looked at it. And so why was that the information that was provided to us?
I, I'm at a loss here. We're, we're talking apples and oranges here. Can you help me?
Actually, I'm talking about the, the materials that we received. Okay, so again, what I was looking to do, and that's just me, and if the other selectmen want to join in, that's great. But really looking to have someone from our town, our future, work with me to go out there to look at what had been proposed, look at some ideas, you know, get some ideas about some of the other areas and how we could accommodate it. We did talk about, some of us here talked about, okay, maybe there's another way to, you know, have sidewalks that bring you into, um, Pompey Hollow. Okay, from another area, that kind of thing. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to work with somebody to go out there and look at it with me and look at the topography and talk about it where it's not just on paper.
Again, the issue of the accident history, the speeding, the safety, that's kind of, that's kind of the primary focus. I mean, like I said, the, any multi-bottle access to connect the two locations would be in support of trying to do traffic calming in, in a sense, you know. So it's, you know, the, really the focus is on, you know, the, the accident history and all that. But I mean, it's in, in doing so, you're kind of combining all these facets of a, of a project together. So I mean, you know, can one stand? So I mean, you know, can one stand alone on its own? I, I guess, but I think the point is that, you know, we're trying to look at it like Dick said, kind of a, there is a short term and a long term. And the long term vision, it was, has been worked on for many years of trying to create something and, you know, where people sit, just don't come buzzing through Ashford and they realize that people live here and there's something special going on. And, and that's both, all works towards trying to create a safer road system. And, you know, and then it, and the RSA ties all those things in with the Cumberland Farms, the crosswalk, the trees, there's dead trees from the ash were, and it goes on and on, so.
So I've been trying to arrange a meeting with DOT for seven months. Well, it started with the school, getting appropriate signage at the school to slow down people who are racing by the school during, when schools in session. We almost had a near fatal accident that involved a big, big truck, semi kind of hauling tow truck. But it was a big one that had a flatbed, rear ending a car that was, came up screaming up on. And that, then doing an abrupt yank to the left and going into the oncoming lane and somebody else was coming out of the school. It was a very near miss. And so I've been even, and I tried to pursue it, even with the towing company, tried to pursue it with getting a meeting with DOT, which was in, you know, that was the first thing. We, let's put it this way, it already started this in December of last year. Then we had state representation change, started working on it with, and had Tammy, which, who I like. But I think she's having difficulty getting the right people involved with us. So I'm about to reach out even higher. But we, you know, been working on that for months to try and get someone from DOT to actually meet with us and talk about these traffic issues. There's that on eighty-nine, there's what's set up on seventy-four. For Cumberland Farms, it was DOT that determined how the entrance and exit to Cumberland Farms was going to work. The, the fact that we don't have decent signage there to, to our, you know, anything that will slow traffic down that's part of actual signage from DOT is, is pretty upsetting. We even have, you know, semis parking on the side of the road out here. So, and we've called the state police and DOT is the one who's accountable for the signage, even trying to get a sign that has a, what is it, a gang tag on it replaced. Okay, it's not as easy to do as you might think. So yes, if I can get support from people who are in the, you know, higher up than us, that would be great. Right now, I'm not getting that. And in fact, it's, it's, I don't have any ETA for actually having that kind of a meeting.
Catherine, I may, the, working through the Connecticut Transportation Institute, you know, I, I'll get you some information, let it out. I'd also say that.
Or I can set up my own meeting.
Work towards getting some people made at a lower level that can respond to this. Some, we also have, I have a commitment from the, you know, the Connecticut Transportation Institute to provide us, loan us some speed radar signs if we were able to get permission of DOT to put them up on Route eighty-nine near the school.
That's what I was trying to do is get the permission. And so I, you know, again, I was working with Tammy on that. And, you know, even the point of us, we actually priced what it would be to purchase signs.
Yep.
It's a matter of being able to put them there. Okay, and how that would work. And they need to relax their rules a bit because they've got specific rules. They made everybody be consistent. And the reality is that isn't covering what's going on at Ashford School. And again, and we see the speeding here, we know what it is. We, we know what the traffic thing is. And we certainly know on social media that sometimes people put things out there that blame an accident on something that was not the person involved or what the situation really was. So, but yes, they're speeding over that hill because they don't, either they don't recognize, you know, we have travelers coming through, they don't recognize that they're going to be coming down to a place like Cumberland Farms, which has an odd entry and exit. And, or treating it, you know, that we have a crosswalk, we couldn't get a stoplight at the crosswalk. Something that would, you know, they could say stoplight approaching and there'd be signs for that, anything to slow them down. So when I looked at what you, yes, Bill. You're on mute. You're still on mute. Michael, do you, Mike, you have the, there you go, Bill.
I got it.
You got it.
Sorry. I'm going to have to jump off in a few minutes. I got the, the call that I was concerned I was going to get. Mike, Dick, I just wanted to take an opportunity. I know you guys have both been working on this for a number of years and, and and we don't have to agree with everything, but we certainly recognize the efforts and the concerns that you've had. I mean, we all are involved in this for what we consider our goal for the best of our community. As a selectman for many years, and I, I again, don't want to talk for, for Catherine or Roger, they can speak for themselves, but I, I know my main concern, and I believe theirs is life and safety issues. And somehow, I think in the back of my mind, if we put that first and we put our efforts together, these other things somehow will fall in place. For, for years, we have been trying to work with DOT. And you're not the first selectman or first selectman, Catherine, that's been frustrated with DOT, no matter who the administration is trying to get something there. They increased that speed limit in front of Cumberland a number of years. We had it, we were looking for thirty-five, it was forty. Then they went to forty-five. What we need to do is, 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 is put our efforts together and start with trying to force a decrease of five or 10 miles an hour, starting from eighty-nine.
Oh, you just froze up.
I agree with all that. I mean, that's where we should start and can start and.
Seventy-four. I'm a celebrant of accidents of parishioners coming out on a, you know, my, my priorities, Mike, you, you're looking for some input is to get a stoplight at forty-four.
You're breaking up a bit.
To get the track somehow, even if. What was that?
I said, you're breaking up a little bit, just repeat that, get a stoplight at forty-four and.
Seventy-four.
Yep.
To put our heads together, to appeal to DOT, to lower the speed limit minimum between seventy-four and eighty-nine on Route forty-four. And if nothing else, to get what we have there for a crosswalk from Trumpco Lane over to the Cumberland Repair.
Yep.
I've been harping on this for I don't know how many years. I was shocked when I heard, I believe Mike got a cost of $12,000 at one time. But I think that, I mean, no, if you want my three priorities, there they are.
Yep.
These other things, looking at landscaping and potential of sidewalks. I got a feeling those things are going to come if we can attract businesses in that we can complement them with. But and still, we physically start being able, and I lived on forty, on eighty-nine for almost 20 years, and I've lived more than that now on forty-four. Our problem is speed and people coming through that. We had a town official almost killed on forty-four and seventy-four last year. And it had to be a direct result of not having a stop sign there and, and, and speed. Those are my priorities. I, I, I like the idea of, of bike groups. I think you're going to have a real challenge with, 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 with cooperation between landowners, landowners and that. But I, I think that that can be a goal for us. But my priority right now is to reduce the speed, get another stoplight. It'll make us two in town and, and fix that crosswalk. That's what I'm focusing on in, in the short term.
Yeah, Bill, if I can jump in here, the, if you go through and read the RSA, it comes up with a bunch, it comes up with a bunch of recommendations. But the next step is to explore those recommendations and look at the options. Rather than tell the state, I want a stop sign, I want this, I want that. You need to do the study that comes up with a recommendation that the state would then embrace. What we're really asking for is for the town to support us, to engage the DOT to do that next step for the RSA.
Have you do have an estimate for what it would take to do that study?
Mike?
Um, I think I did estimate, you know, you're probably looking at. Just the, probably a design effort, you know, you're probably looking for, on the DOT's part, it could be, you know, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars because it, to do the comprehensive study. But I, could I add that when we were going through this process with the RSA that the, the chief, one of the chief engineers for DOT indicated that once they kind of taken the, done the work at the signal at forty-four and seventy-four, if, if things didn't improve relative to accident history and what have you, that they might be willing to go back and take a look at the broader picture of things. Just that there's warrant, what they call warrants that are required to put in a full signalized intersection. And, you know, they're, they have to be met through, this is a federal, federal system as well, not only state, but the criteria then, so they, they, you know, the engineers there being engineers, they check off the boxes and if the boxes aren't checked, then they say, well, we can't do it. But I think we have to engage them in the broader picture here of road safety and speed and, and all the other issues along their access points like Cumberland Farms to see if they will at least go through and initiate that next phase, which is a traffic engineering study that looks at the corridor as a whole.
So let me, let me make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. You're saying that you're looking for the town to put out a couple hundred thousand dollars to do this kind of a study.
No, not the town at this point. It could, if, if the town did it, see, the way the state operates, they like the towns to spend their money on their, on the road, state roads. And, and that's how unfortunately, a lot of towns get, have to get things done is by spending their money to get their, the roads fixed in their towns. But that, that is an option. But the other option is to go and see if the state will do it. And, you know, as you're evolving and Bill's seen, that's not always easy. But I think, I mean, I can catch up with you to bring, give you some names of some people and me, I'll make some, I'll make some calls of people that I know that can maybe bring some additional perspective to this thing and see if we can move it forward. Just, you know, we don't want to move forward from our town or future or EDC.
No.
Off doing something here that the board of selectmen is on, want us to do or on.
Are, are you aware of any particular grants that are out there at this point? Because we know we're looking at it all the time.
Oh, yeah, there's. Provided, there's a number of the lots up and there's actually was a grant, we missed it last year to fix those kind of, those, the, the intersect, I mean, the crosswalks. And that's another one we should try to get on, on list for, you know, where, because they went around the state, that state paid for them a hundred percent of fixing, fixing those crosswalks. And that's something we could get on a list, at least to get in line for, to, to do that. You know, the.
There's something that's out there right now that I was looking at it and it looked like we didn't qualify for it. But we will look again and any information you can provide to us. You know, we, we try to do the research as much as possible. We're also dealing with day to day operations of the town at the same time. So if there's any additional information you want to help us with there, that would be great.
Yeah, Catherine.
One of the things that I've always found that seemed to be a good formula with, with, nothing's a guarantee with the state, but encouraging them were matching grants. And I'm wondering if any of these funds from the American Rescue Plan that we anticipate getting, and, and I get a general theme from going through some of the paperwork that they've given us, that they're talking about health and safety. And these are, we're, we're talking certainly about life and safety issues here. I'm wondering if any of those grant, those funds could be usable to go towards studies and, and, and we base that on life and safety issues.
Actually, the way that, you always have to remember to put the word COVID when you're talking American Rescue Plan, is how do we recover from COVID? It's how do we deal with COVID? It's, you know, when I say recover, it's how do we bring our community out that have been all so isolated by COVID? That's one of the aspects of it. So how do we make our buildings safer that, because of COVID? So we always have to kind of test it against that, whatever we're thinking of. But I will definitely look more closely to see if there's ways to, again, the kind of creating the community, that sense of community is an aspect you can draw on. When we look at our funds as well, but we also have to look at some other things that we know we're going to need those funds for. We're going to, in all likelihood, we're going to want to try and expand our broadband because that's one of the key areas in there. And we have a lot of people who don't have broadband and should, even employees who aren't able to work from home. So during the first part of the pandemic, they couldn't even do that. So there are other things that are categories under this that we're going to be looking at as well. Just want to make sure you're aware. And as we're looking at everything, we're also looking at, are there any grant opportunities? Rather than using American Rescue Funds, are there any grant opportunities that we're missing? You know, or might be out there. So anyone who has information about some grants that we might have missed, great, we want to know. And Bill, to your point about this being about health, safety, it's not, I think it's not only about safety, but it's also bringing the community out. So there might be a way to do that. What I'm trying to do.
We've got a lot of creative minds that.
Yeah.
Think we all know what our focus is. Maybe we can put our heads together. Catherine, I, I've got to excuse myself, I've got to run.
I'm grateful that you were able to be on, thank you.
I am too. And I, again, I thank everybody for the work that they've done on this. Mike and, and Dick, please tell your other folks, it is much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, and.
Okay, Catherine.
Yeah.
I would ask that the board of selectmen basically endorse our town or future, and primarily Mike Gantic, because Mike has a lot of contacts within Department of Transportation, not at the high level, but the mid level that.
What are you asking for endorsement of?
If, I'll, I'll finish, that we go forward to try to get the authorization and funding to take the next step that was proposed for the RSA. And with that, we may need to come back and get the board of selectmen to endorse those activities. Mike, am I pretty close to saying the right things there?
Well, I think, I mean, I don't, we're not looking for the town to spend any money at this point.
No.
And I, and I would hope that we don't have to spend any money. I, I, my point would be that if we can get the DOT, and, and it may be under the presidential infrastructure bill, we'll see where that lands and goes, but there may be money there. And I'd also say, I haven't had a chance to digest it, but the state just in the last month published their own, you know, road safety program goals.
That's what I'm talking about.
And I'd, I'd like to use that document against them to get them to come out here and fulfill their obligation to improve the road safety along forty-four, seventy-four and even eighty-nine. So.
Yes, so, so basically, we'll take, we'll take the lead on doing that. We should ask for the board of selectmen to support us in doing that.
So I'm a little confused because you're an advisory board.
Yeah, I, we'll provide, we just want to know whether we can help you do the, get the information. And if you want us to keep on working on doing any of that type of thing. I mean, we're not going to, if this is a board of selectmen ultimately.
Right.
Decision, town meetings decision, if, if things happen that affect the town. But I think really what, you know, we're here to say, do you want us to spend any more time doing anything on this, this thing, or just back way and move on to some other things? You know, do you want us to spend time trying to beat the bushes and?
What else did you have on your docket?
No, there's, there's things looking ahead, there's other things, plenty of things to look at.
I mean, Catherine, I've been, I've been reading the RSA recommendations and opportunities.
Yep.
Again, what they've identified is exactly the conversations that we've had here about, you know, the crosswalk, about signage, about, you know, yeah. Further down the road, yes, you know, we can talk about bike paths and what have you. But certainly we could consider pursuing their initial recommendations and opportunities in, in the context.
But we're not, we're not actually turning it over them, to them to go and do that pursuit in terms of, other than helping us identify maybe some grants are, they wouldn't be writing. They wouldn't be writing grant requests. They wouldn't, we wouldn't expect that at all. That's our, that's really the town's role.
No, Catherine.
Yes.
The group that's worked on this, the initial RSA group, the facilitation was done primarily through Mike and other people. We're simply saying, Board of Selectmen, support us to keep on going to the next step. That's all we're saying.
Well, and what would your next step be as a as an out town our future board? Commission, committee.
Will be to keep on trying to align those parties to get things moving so we can get the DOT road safety, you know, engineering study initiated. And to look at these other components, you know, there's there's grants out there identifying the grants for the crosswalk repair improvement.
Like, let's not, don't put the near term first in the long term. Long term would be looking for opportunities to do things to link together Ashford and Warrenville, which could be those bike paths, you know, you know, bike trails through some place, not on the sidewalk between West Ashford and Warrenville. But that's long term. And that is where a very specific grant would come up. And we would talk to the Board of Selectmen about the support for that grant. Right now, the near term is simply taking the next step that were recommended in the RSA and have the Board of Selectmen support the our town, our future, primarily led by Mike, to go forth to engage DOT to support us on that.
I I have trouble having an advisory group doing the reach outs to the state agencies that we have to work with. Okay, I.
Okay.
I understand, excuse me, I understand. Um, that, Mike, you may have some contacts or whatever. But when we've had some of those situations before, there've been some things that got out of hand a bit and created bad situations for the town to pursue some things. And I I'm not going to elaborate on what they were, but I know that's happened. And I just, that's what you hear is my concern about that. It's really, I believe you're an advisory board, you're telling us what you think is important for us to pursue. And then we should be trying to do that. And if you have information.
Catherine.
Mike was going to talk.
Yeah, I mean, I absolutely, Catherine, you know, anything we do is going to be going through you and and, you know, Board of Selectmen. If, for instance, we get somebody from the board, just trying to get somebody to meet with you, be one of the initiatives, things you're trying to help with, you know. That that would be the thing I would look to do. I'm not, I'm not looking to take over and run a project and then come back to Board of Selectmen and say, okay.
No, I I'm actually, tell you the quite, quite honestly, Mike, I'm very comfortable working with you. I've worked with you before. And so, you know, again, I would like to work closely with you on this to make sure that we're coordinating in the way that we need to be. I don't want too many cooks in the kitchen.
Yeah, I agree.
Because then you've got a whole bunch of people going off and trying to pull in legislators and whatever. And you don't have a really coordinated effort. And and you have those legislators thinking that there are different things that they're being asked to do than what we're really asking them to do. Because we've had that happen before. So back to Roger. Roger, from your perspective, um, and let's make sure we're clear on the next step near term. Stated.
Well, no, I'm just, like I said, I mean, I found the paperwork and in terms of identifying those items that we've talked about.
Yeah.
And, you know, certainly, you know, united, we stand divided, we fall and all that crap. But, you know, we need to, you know, if we use all means available to obviously get DOT's attention to listen to us and and understand our concerns. So that's.
I mean, essentially, what we're trying to do at our town, our future, it was established is try to assist. I mean, again, the town doesn't have a lot of staff. We're trying to help pull things together to bring to the Board of Selectmen and in other agencies and groups in town to facilitate getting things moving along. So all we're trying to look to do is to to help where we can. We don't want to get in the way. We're not looking to run and do things ourselves because that's not our our duty here.
Not your charge.
We're we're volunteers, we have, we have their lives. And I think it's just a matter of how can we help? And that that's really, you know, we've presented all these different studies. We helped initiate these studies. And we've been involved in just how to, how can we help you guys get to the next step? Because it's obviously an issue that's been out there and it's something that's been talked about for a while, too. And so we've kind of forced, begin to formulate it things we can do. And it's just a matter, okay, what what are we going to focus on? And and I think, I think I agree, you know, a hundred percent with what Bill Bill had said. That's that's that is the goal. Maybe I missed, misrepresented it in a sense, I didn't put it together as quite right on the faction. But that that really is what it's about is, you know, life safety first. And all those other things are going to fall into place eventually. If you move forward and try to fix those things, you're going to have those other things probably happen along with it. So, I mean, that's kind of where we're at. But it's just a matter of what do you want us to do? In the past, what we've done is we facilitated different groups and things where maybe the Board of Selectmen or the town staff haven't had the time to do it. And that's all we're looking to do. Do you want us to continue to do that? That that's really the question.
Actually, I think what would be good is, um, I'm going to be more aggressive, if you will, about pursuing, getting that meetings with DOT. If you can give me names, that's great, that will help. And when I say aggressive, it's kind of like now I have to be aggressive because I've tried to rely on, you know, somebody else to help me with this. And, you know, we didn't even get told at the last minute. We didn't, I got told at the very last minute, only after I asked, that a meeting was canceled. So after I went and told the superintendent and I told somebody else, they were going to be involved in the meeting because that was what was being asked. So very, very awkward. So what what I do see is I see that your group, your board, would be providing information and advisory involvement in meetings that we have with the DOT.
Yes.
Okay, but we need to set those meetings, we need to make sure we're have, we're setting up the primary contacts. And rather than you, but if you can provide information that we can use to do that, I think that would be good. And part of the reason I say that is because there I am aware of a number of years ago seeing some pretty awful, awful arguments and behavior that happened to kind of sprang up between the Board of Selectmen and another group trying to do this, to do some of this stuff. And I just want to avoid that. So I very much appreciate the, you know, I'm not even talking hours. These are days, months, years that you have worked with this to try and come up with something that will better our community and draw us together and make make Ashford a very real village, if you will. And so the information you've provided, I think, is right on the money. It's a matter of, I think your role is going to be being involved in the meetings that we have with DOT, et cetera, to provide information, to give us what we need to work with to, you know, the detail that you've already been pulling together. You know, you did your research well.
Catherine, I would, I would add to this. The RSA would never have happened had it not been for Mike and the group at our town, our future. There was nothing involved from the Board of Selectmen in terms of organizing other than Mike Zambro gave his blessing for Mike to go forward to do that. So what we were asking for tonight was nothing but the same. You seem to feel different on that? That's your prerogative.
I don't know what you're talking about, Richard, when you say I feel different. So why don't you elaborate?
You feel different in that you want the Board of Selectmen to be in the driver's seat of this rather than delegating that to the group that had been working it?
Because you're an advisory group, you're pulling in. Give, wait, you're pulling information to provide to the Board of Selectmen to pursue this.
Okay, fine.
Because we have to pursue the funding. We have to pursue making a case to, for example, if we have to do a matching grant, guess who gets to go before the Board of Finance and pursue that to get the money?
We're talking about the RSA, there's no necessarily matching grant. But that's okay, Catherine, I'm simply stating what you said, and it's fine. If that's how you feel, that's how we will respond.
That is, that had, that is the perspective. And, you know, Mike, I just want to see if you feel that that's an unreasonable way to approach this.
It's the protocol, I mean, it's.
It is.
And is, it's supposed to, and we did go through the RSA. I mean, I always want to organize it, but, you know, we went through.
You did the right thing.
Went through Mr. Zambro and he just he deferred and says, just go ahead and organize it. And so we 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 keep, that's the same thing we look to do here, just a matter of how much, you know, if 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 there's more time and effort that you guys can put into to move this thing forward. That's what it's all about. Bottom line is we're looking to get these things done.
Right.
The bottom line, because it's it's for the betterment of the town and the citizens and the traveling public. So it's, we're just here to help facilitate that in any way we can.
So I can tell you, I'll be looking for more detailed information and I want to meet with you to get that. You know, we can do a lot in these meetings. But if there's more detailed information that's going to help us do the reach outs we need to do and get the meetings arranged that we need to to have and have you come into those meetings and be be able to provide the meat and potatoes on this, I think that's terrific. I just think that when all is said and done and we talk about the money that could be involved short term and long term, then that's a Board of Selectmen thing. And this is a, it truly is an advisory group and your worker base, you've done great. Okay, so I don't want to take anything away from that, that's not what it is. It's just making sure that we're not in there overextending ourselves and having people that are not necessarily having to respond to the rest of the boards and whatever about what we're doing. And we don't know because it's been handled by somebody else and we may not have been.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I think banding together on this is going to be a very good way to do it. Especially when we're trying to get the attention of the right people. Again, you can hear my frustration because I've been trying to do this for basically seven months. And it shouldn't take so long, it shouldn't take so long when lives are involved.
Correct.
And it shouldn't take so long to get a damn light lit again.
That's crazy.
When it was called into nine one one.
You know what I would do, put it, if you put it on the state's system, they have a DOT as a system where you put those things in. I've done it many times on state stuff, they. Because, yeah, because it's documented. Then when they find out it's been out for a very, and something happens, the liability issue, so.
That's why I'd love to sit and talk with you.
Okay.
There's some things I don't know to do to go into that system. So that would be good. All right, so again, in terms of our next steps, we are going to look at everything you've got here and try to get meetings set up with the right people to pursue it and appreciate all the effort that you put in to pulling this together for us and want you to be there. I don't want to be sitting in that meeting without at least one of you, if not a couple of you.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Roger, does that work for you? Thank you. And Richard, you going to be okay with that?
Will be evaluating my future participation in this organization. Because frankly, Catherine, I'm not at all happy with the way you've handled this. But that's your prerogative and it's my prerogative. We've worked, we've worked very hard on this and and we we hope to try to make a difference with what we've done. But if what we're doing does not accomplish that, then it's not really worth spending our time working on it.
Well, you may not know me very well, but I can tell you that, first of all, your efforts are very much appreciated and your role in this and in economic development is very appreciated. And that I'm one of those people that likes to make sure we get whatever it is done. That's my personality. And so looking at it, we're just going to make sure we drive this forward. So I hope you will participate because I think you're invaluable. Thank you. All right, and again, Mike, thank you. You've been providing me all kinds of information and I very, very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very useful to work with. Okay, American Rescue, communication strategies. Consider implementation of Text My Gov in conjunction with an emergency notification system. So this is also something that I think you had in your summary for our board, Mike, Mike and Richard. And so we have been in communicate, we have been talking with Everbridge. We're looking at using their services for free, which is very good. And that's for major events. It's a matter of getting people signed up. They can do reverse nine eleven to pull information in from Connecticut Alert, for example. You know, people who've already got that. And so that's one part of it. And that's really keeping the the community informed about major events that affect safety, et cetera. So I've been doing this exercise of when we have storms, doing something. I put it out on Facebook, I put it on the town's Facebook site. I then put it out on Ashford Community Connections, which I believe has about two thousand followers. And I also put it out on the the Ashford Women's Group because I happen to be a member of that group and I could put it there. So what I've done is taken information that I've received from Eversource, from Public Works, from the Fire Department, from people on Facebook who are saying, hey, the power's out at my place. Wait, a tree just came down, pulled down the wires, it's at such and such location. And taking all of that, you know, telling them to call in those, call in those real emergencies to nine one one. So it gets, what's the word? I want to say dispatched out appropriately to the right people and and actually monitored as to what the progress is. So people calling, for example, Public Works to say, we got wires down and a tree down, is not the way to report it. It's to take it to nine one one and then they dispatch it out to Eversource. They dispatch it out to our Public Works if appropriate or to our Fire Department. So, but I take the information and I put out periodic posts about what our status is, which roads are closed, which which roads and streets have power outages, roughly how many people are being affected. And I've had, developed a very, very nice relationship with our Eversource person who's covering this and getting, I get very detailed information, which we didn't get before. And it was, I told him, I said, I only want the information about Ashford and right around us. I don't want the rest of the state. I don't, actually don't care. Right now, we're focused on, you know, in these emergency situations, we're focused on this. So I've been doing that through Facebook. And when it comes to the more major things, like we have a bridge out and it's going to be out for an extent, a slightly extended period of time, that's something that we go out through Eversource. Some of these other things that are kind of, I want to say transient, they're kind of, they're only going to be there for, you know, a couple hours or whatever, but people ought to know, is not something we would necessarily use Eversource for. Okay, that's my understanding. Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, you're on mute? Everbridge, Everbridge. When I'm talking to both of them, I get them confused. I hope you get the gist of what I'm saying. All right, thank you, Chris. So that's one means of communication about emergencies. And we can use that and we want to use that. The other one is something called Text My Gov. And we did, there was a demo done during our last Board of Selectmen meeting, which you're more than welcome to go back and look at. Text My Gov is something where someone finds, signs up and it's a local number. We put a, there's a widget put on our our website for people to do a signup. And they can sign up for any kind of messaging that we want to send out through a text. So it actually could reach more people than Facebook and might not have to put it out on things like Twitter and these other things, just kind of look at, you know, texting to people to let them know what's going on. And people can sign up by just giving their phone number and saying what group they want to be part of. We'd have to have a group set up. There'd be a group that says, I want to know about what's going on during a storm. Okay, that, and they would get that. And I think my last summary that I put out for our storm was when we had, we were down to two roads were out, one of them was Cushman because of the, I'm going to call it the bridge, being washed away. And another one was because we had other washout things. And then there was a little warning about another road to be careful on the edges of, in particular, because you can get yourself into real trouble on that particular one. And I recommended that they not be out driving around during the storm, which made sense. And then which streets had outages and there, at the time, there was like ten streets, ten roads. And let them know that. And I monitor, I actually monitor this. And let them know that. And I monitor, I actually monitor, um, this town, it's not a town site, but a Facebook site to see what people are saying. Oh, power's back on, um, on lips, power's back on, on CCAR, those kinds of things. And then I send out an update to everybody to go, here's where we stand at this point in time. So text my gov in terms of pushing out information can be used like that. And the way the system works is, uh, I understand the design. I do have a lot of IT background. You could actually put the texts in, sitting at a, at your laptop. If you have, if you're one of the people who has access to put the texts from the town out to everybody. And in doing those ones for storms or whatever, that would be something where I'd be working with our emergency management director, uh, at least at the get go. And, uh, if I had a thing I wanted to put out, he would review it. If he had a thing he wanted to put out, I would review it. And we work together during those kinds of situations. There are other kinds of things we can push out as well. If first, we can set up groups of information that people, you know, people can say, I want to be, I want to get the information about storms or, or I want to get the information about events or cancellations of events. For example, when the concert, uh, was canceled a couple of weeks ago, um, we could send out that. So that's pushing information out to the community. And we're looking at really, how do we? Eversource is, I'm sorry, Everbridge is something to communicate, uh, significant issues to the community that are really about their safety. The text my gov is more about engaging the community. And part of the engagement I get, again, is sending out information, but there's another aspect to it where they can text us. And when they text us, um, we would have something set up that is, um, I'm going to call them scripts. Relatively simple to do. We just need to make sure we've got everything in place to do it. And there's a, a good bit of planning and effort that has to go into that. And so a good example would be, um, dog license. They text dog license and what it would do is come up with up here, if you're looking to get, uh, renew your dog license, this is what you do. And you actually would point them to, say on our website where the instructions are for that. Or to a Facebook page or to some other website, depending on what their question is. And you can have all kinds of, I want to call them reserve words, but they're, uh, target words. Uh, that will, they'll pick up on, the technology will pick up on. And we actually would test, say what these words are that would be related to, say, dog license. The, um, Chris, I was trying to think of another example they gave us. Oh, one was, uh, meeting minutes. And what it did, you know, with our demo was a meeting minutes, took us, took us out what it was that was set up very quickly with something that said, uh, took them out, the person who texted would say, meeting minutes and agendas are located here. And what it would have is the link out to our, our, uh, town website where they are, where anybody can go in, they can get an agenda, they can get meeting minutes, they can get the materials for a meeting. And it would be very easy for them to do. Um, so we're looking at something like that. When you think about our, um, interaction with the community, the town's interaction with the community, what do you think of something like this? I know we talked, uh, the, the people, the staff has seen it. We talked about their workflows and how that would fit in. There's all the, all our other aspects to this application, if you will. But it's, uh, something that would allow, allow that kind of a two-way engagement that would also maybe take some of, um, we've already had improvements that we've made in terms of getting information out on our website. So people can go out there and they can get information, you know, pull down a form or whatever. We don't have a lot of, you can fill the form online. Eventually we'd like to get to that. But right now we don't have, really don't have a lot of that in place. Um, but this, this concept of being able to, uh, have something that will automatically answer some of their questions would also be something that helps in terms of the workflow for some of our people working here. It also gives a sense of, hey, you can engage through multiple media. You can call. You go out and try and figure it out on your own on the website. You can text, um, which most, most, more people probably have texting capability than they follow Twitter or Facebook or go out to our website on their own, I think. And you can get, give me your feedback on what you think about that.
I, I think that's fantastic. I think the more you engage, uh, and more tools, um, you have out there for the public. Cause I mean, it's the demographics in Ashford are changing and you've got, uh, I think there's a lot of people out there that feel very comfortable with the technology. But my, my question is, I'm assuming that this text my government would allow people to sign up for alerts for like agendas and and minutes and things like that. And that, that would be one thing I think, uh, you know, I think would be an asset as well. And that's another way to maybe get more people engaged and what have you, because when, um, you know, people have to do a lot of searching and pecking through the the website, it's a little more difficult at times. And I think that allows people to, uh, you know, to, to, to feel like the transparency is there and the, the access to their, their, their government is there. So it's, I think it's all great. Kudos to you guys for looking at all that.
So, and that's something where, you know, economic development, they put that in, it takes them out to your site. Excuse me. Or, um, our town, our future takes them out to, to your site. They don't have to go try and figure out where it is on Facebook or where, you know, what else you've got. It will say, do you want to go Facebook? Do you want to go to here? Whatever. Here's your options. And, um, small, small business, it would take them, you know, those key words would take them to wherever that seems appropriate. So, um, I'm hoping, again, I'm hoping that's attractive when you're thinking about real engagement with the community. You know, again, this is all about looking at all the aspects of how can we bring the community together and provide them with information that they need in their daily lives or on occasion. Okay, so with this, um, I had talked with Bill. He knew we probably wouldn't be on here for now. What we want to do, uh, what I'd like to do, uh, based upon something he had mentioned is we're going, uh, we've, again, we've had three demos of this. It looks really attractive. We know there's quite a bit of work in setting it up and getting it working the way it needs to be. We know we want to do an advertising campaign, if you will, to the community, for the community. Um, because we certainly didn't have enough people signing up for Everbridge. Okay, before, I, Chris, do you remember what the number of people was that signed up for something like that when it was offered back when? Was it fifty, a hundred? You're on mute. Yes.
I believe it was something like two hundred and thirty out of about three thousand numbers that they had data mined.
Yep. Another thing too is ever, um, I'm sorry, uh, text my gov is sitting on the same platform as the federal government, something. So we, we talked about the security of the information that's out there. Making sure that that's not something that's, you know, people's numbers aren't passed around. And all you need is a phone number. You, all you need to do is provide a phone number as opposed to other information that Everbridge would need, uh, to be able to send out information to particular areas within the town. They need the, the street, they need the name as, as in addition to the phone number and the email, so they can use multiple ways to send out that kind of information. All right. So, um, but what we would, what I'd recommend and, um, where is? Uh, there you are, Roger. People are moving around on here. Um, is, uh, I'd like to go out to, and we know of at least another town, by the way, text my gov is the company that puts it forth. I think they're in their third year of doing it and they are national and they only work with municipalities. They also have a, I'm going to call it a marketing pack, package for how you get people signed up, et cetera. You know, what you use for different vehicles to do that. And, uh, but we haven't talked with another town that's used it here in Connecticut. And I have another one that's in Massachusetts. And so, uh, rather than making a decision about this one tonight, uh, I'd like to hold it off. Uh, Roger, if it's okay with you, until we have that conversation, those conversations, how they're doing. So, oh, that's good. Thank you. Uh, American Rescue Plan is the next thing on here and potentials for project funding. So potentials are, um, technology for hybrid meetings. The, uh, which we know would be covered. The, uh, text my gov would be covered for community engagement and communications, that's another category. Um, and then also the, uh, professional engineering services that we talked about for assessing our buildings for HVAC, mechanical, electrical, plumbing and fire protection systems. That's also would be covered by the American Rescue Plan, based upon everything I've seen. So, um, so what I'm looking for, we already got uh, approval to, uh, work with the consulting, you know, the, the, do the assessments. Text my gov, we're going to wait on, and we're waiting on the information that I'm hoping we'll get from, uh, our good, uh, our good friends. Mike and, uh, Eric from, um, Savage, and Mike from Tiki. So, uh, and again, at that point in time, I'd like to come back and say, okay, we want to pursue it with this. Bill was pretty amenable to that because this doesn't increase the mill rate. And these are, in a sense, the, uh, certainly text my gov is, hey, a one-time thing. It's a two-year contract. Uh, I think it's forty-two hundred the first year because there's, uh, twelve hundred and implement, it's either forty-two or forty-eight the first year because of implementation cost. And then, uh, for the second year and years thereafter, it's three thousand. So.
We had any, uh, conversation yet with, uh, Chief Borgman about fire department, uh, utilizing any of these monies or?
Uh, no, haven't had that conversation yet, but I will be. Okay. In terms of what they need, uh, I do talk with Chief Borgman about, uh, text my gov and some other things that are needed down at the uh, down at the fire station. One of them is the lighting, the outside lighting that's around, I think it's around the back. It's around the whole building. So we talked about that. And, uh, when we talked about that, it was to go on the capital, he said he didn't need it right away. It was to go on the capital improvement plan. So I've already documented that for next year's capital improvement plan. It's something that's needed. I suspect that we may be able to use some of these, the American Rescue Funds for that, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Bottom line is it's needed. Bottom line is.
One of the cabins in, in Willimantic, and I mean, uh, getting equipment, they're getting a new ambulance, uh.
Is that because of COVID? Uh, again, COVID related.
Yep.
And so I haven't heard anything beyond the lighting at this point, but I think, I think, um, uh, I think that, uh, Tom is doing his own gathering information from the people who are there. The fire department itself. I don't know. That's all, that's what I have for information so far. He was good enough to meet with me last week. And, uh, he also mentioned about the, um, the, uh, light pole that's out, that's on the road. I think it's number thirty, it's right where the speed sign is saying forty-five miles an hour right there. So I've already, um, I'm actually meeting with, uh, ever source tomorrow. He's coming to the office. And, uh, he's, uh, talking with him about that and the other lighting as well to see if there's anything ever source can be involved in to help with as well. Like I said, we're looking for any funding we can get from anywhere. American Rescue Plan, I'd like to make sure is the last resort. I mean, if we, if we have grants and things that we can use, we should be using them. Instead of, uh, just, you know, putting everything on the American Rescue Fund and not taking advantage of the other things that were due or we could get. So is there anything else that you've heard about from the fire department that might be something that would qualify? They, they didn't say that we're looking for a, a new ambulance. They're getting a new fire truck.
Saying this, I know all other towns are doing that.
Yeah.
Yep.
So what we have is we have six hundred and, I don't know, thirty-eight, thirty-seven, uh, six hundred and thirty-eight, thirty-something thousand has already been received from the American Rescue Fund. We're going to get this, the same amount, it's going to be one point two million dollars. Uh, and I can't remember what the change is on that. Um, and we'll get the other half of this next spring or summer. We've already created a fund that it can already be drawn from. We need to have a good plan for what we're drawing from it. I'm talking about the initial things which are, in some ways, small amounts compared to some of the bigger things that we could be doing. Um, but these are things that we pretty much should be doing right away. The, um, we have until the end of two thousand twenty-four, uh, bear with me, two thousand twenty-four to have a full plan for the money and two thousand twenty-six, I believe, to spend it all. So, um, some of the things that we would have considered capital improvements, as long as they're in some way related to recovery from COVID or prevention for COVID um, would be appropriate and also broadband in terms of, um, that. Yeah. And with broadband, we've reached out to Spectrum uh, to get information about where Spectrum is set up in town, so that we know where it's not. Because, uh, we do find Frontier is limited in what their service really is for broadband. And we're, you know, even town employees are not being able to log in. So, um, anyway, so that's where we're looking at American Rescue Plan funding. And every time we look at something that we want to spend money on, we have to assess it as to whether it's generally COVID related in some way. Uh, if it is, uh, something that can be funded through another means and we just missed it and didn't look close enough. So we make sure we do look close enough. And then, um, we also kind of tested to make sure that it's going to pass the test when we have to do the reporting on it. So that's where we are with that. The, uh, so looking again at what our town, our future has brought forth, we'll be, you know, we'll be assessing to see whether there's anything in there that we feel we can get funded through um, the American Rescue Plan in terms of, uh, helping the community, you know, bring it together as a community. I mean, there's even things to saying, getting the community out and, and in the fresh air. I mean, literally, uh, those kinds of things. So biking and walking are part of that and other towns are looking at that. Uh, so I'm aware of that. We're also doing reach outs to other towns to make sure we know what they're doing too. All right, um. So, uh, board, I think we're into any questions about that? Any more questions about the American Rescue Plan? How about you, Mike? Anything, uh, and I'm saying Michael Gant.
Uh, no, that's all sounds good.
Yeah. Um, also small businesses, we looked at, you know, what's the funding for small businesses? And we found out that there's actually funding that's out there for small businesses. And so, um, we're hoping to provide you some of that information. I'm not sure, actually economic development to, and the small business, our, our, uh, Ashford Business Association, to make sure they're taking advantage of what's already out there. Um, and then seeing if there are any other needs beyond that.
Sounds good. Appreciate it.
Well, you're, you're a good person, I think, to talk with about that. Uh, okay, moving on to boards, commissions, committee appointments. We have, uh, the inland, uh, first one inland wetland, some water course, courses. They have put forth the name of Michael Dietz to fill this alternate member vacancy. Mr. Dietz supplied a letter of interest. He's an unaffiliated voter. Um, I can tell you that, um, the people on that board are quite excited about having this person join them. Person has excellent credentials. Um, so I am looking to see if this person, uh, I believe you have all the information you need, Roger.
Yeah.
For us to appoint that person.
I moved to a point.
I second, I second that and I'm delighted that the, uh, that board was able to find someone of this caliber. So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Dietz will now be on that board. Uh, and that was filling a vacancy. We have, um, so we still have uh, filling an alternate vacancy created by the resignation of Ken Gary. Can be a Democrat, a Republican or an unaffiliated. We don't have anybody yet for that. Board of Assessment Appeals, fill the vacant Democrat seat to this, uh, November. Board of Assessment Appeals, fill with vacant Democrat seat to this November, don't have anybody for that yet. Recreation Commission, fill to alternate member seats with terms to expire in 2024 and 2026. I will say, the Recreation Commission, we're, we are really, the volunteers are maxed out or busy with their own lives, and so that's a board that doesn't even have a chair and has not had a chair for going on at least three years. And they don't have a person to take minutes. So what's been happening is Sherri York, who is the Recreation, Parks and Recreation Director, has been trying to act in that capacity, and that is beyond her role. She shouldn't be the one doing that. So anything anybody can do to find people that want to be actively involved in that board and, you know, help to fill roles like that, take positions of responsibility, would be helpful. And nobody cares what party they're from. We just care about people who want to be involved in the town with Parks and Rec, which is a great place to be. So, and I'm going to remind you, there's a concert tomorrow night that they have. They're doing the food for. Commission on Aging, we have four Commission two-year seats that expire, that already expired. At least one seat must be a Republican or unaffiliated. Jagodowski, Zinski, Martin and Sampson wish to be reappointed. And Ms. Wilms Pandolfo has resigned from the Commission, so there's a vacancy on the Commission of Aging. So I'm looking for a motion to, what's the word?
Reappoint.
Reappoint, thank you. Mom, reappoint Jagodowski, Martin and Sampson.
I'll make that motion.
And I will happily second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. All right, tax refunds. Chris, do we have anything?
No.
Okay, adjournment. Motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mike, thank you for your help tonight. Jeff, thank you for staying on. And Chris, thank you. Roger, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.